At this time, I'd like to call the meeting of the Caldwell County Planning Board. The session for Tuesday, February 11th, 6:00 P.M. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. We have one agenda item that we would like to discuss, but before that, I would like to ask Dr. Jeff Church, he will lead us in prayer tonight.
That's great. Thank you, the Saint Father, for your many blessings. Lord, thank you for all that are here tonight. Lord, just pray blessings upon each and every person, pray blessings upon the citizens in our community. Lord, just bless this meeting. Christ name, we'll pray. Amen.
Before you, you have the minutes from the last meeting. Actually, let's go ahead and approve the agenda. You have an agenda for tonight's meeting before you. Give everybody just a second. I hope you've already looked over that in your packet, and then I will take a motion to accept. Yeah, I have a motion to accept. Have a second.
A second.
Have a second. All of them, favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Before you have the minutes from the last meeting, which was September 10th at 6:00 P.M. as well, give everyone a second to look over those, make sure there's no corrections or additions, and after that, I will enter a motion to accept.
Motion to accept, Mr. Stevens.
Enter a motion to accept, have a second.
A second.
All of them, favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Before tonight, we have one item on the agenda, which is a rezoning of a piece of property out on Highway 18, just past Blue Ridge Cemetery. I know this was put in your packet as well, and at this time, I will ask Shelley to come forward and give us a report.
Thank you, Chris. So this is the first rezoning request of 2020, and you can see in the title there, and this is being made by Curtis Gaines, who is the applicant, and he has a surveying company, but obviously, the relevant information is what the zoning is, and then also what it should be based on comprehensive plan and public trust at general welfare, as opposed to, you know, what may go there, because several producers could potentially go on-site. So just to give an overview, again, the applicant is Curtis Gaines, and he's wanting to rezone a 1.36 acre lot that is in between Cedar Rock and Lenore. It's adjacent south of Woodford Boulevard, southeast of Blue Ridge Circle, and southwest of Wildwood Road. And looking at our future land use map from our recently adopted comprehensive plan, you can see it here, there is a blue dot between Cedar Rock and Lenore, and that is an industrial center node, and within the new comprehensive plan, industrial center nodes include recommendations for rezonings to general business, light industrial, and industrial districts, so it would be an appropriate request for that area, based on, again, our newly adopted comprehensive plan, which has a lot of public input involved in the process of creating it, and then also, they look at surrounding land uses and availability of water, and all kinds of different factors in order to come up with this proposed future land use map. And if you want to know kind of what the parcel looks like, you can see it there, again, 1.36 acres, and he's hoping to rezone from low intensity residential to general business. And per GS 153A-341, now statute, actually, our statutes have recently changed, some have been combined, the city and county statutes, but the consistency statement still stands. The planning board has to adopt a consistency statement, and I'm allowed to draft one for you all, and you can choose to accept it, or you can create your own. And mine would be motion to recommend approval, because the amendment is consistent with the county's comprehensive land development plan, does not negatively impact the surrounding neighborhood adjacent properties, and promotes public health, safety, and welfare, and the motion would be to recommend approval to both commissioners. Would you use that one? If anyone has any questions for me, or Curtis is also here.
At this time, is there anyone in the audience tonight in opposition of this rezoning request? Okay. And at this time, board, we also have the applicant, Mr. Curtis Gaines, with us tonight. Curtis, do you wish to say thank the board?
I do not. I just brought kind of a preliminary site plan, if anybody had any questions to what we had planned to do on the side, so if there are any general questions I can answer, I'll be glad to.
Anyone have any questions? Is there any discussion about this rezoning request? No discussion. At this time, I will ask a motion.
Motion to approve based on the consistency statement in our staff report.
Out of motion.
Approved.
Have a second.
Second.
Order is a second. All of them, favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines.
Okay, at this time, I will take a motion to adjourn out of our planning board's meeting. Motion. Okay, have a motion to adjourn, have a second.
Second.
All of them, favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are now adjourned. At this time, we will reconvene as the Caldwell County Board of Justices for February 11th, 2020, and we are here tonight, as you very well know in your packet, Caldwell Timber Partners has issued, or came to us for a variance, and that's what we'll be hearing tonight. At this time, I would like to go ahead and swear in the individuals, and Mr. Turner, I believe we'll just do that in one whole time. Is that good? Okay. Okay. And for those in the audience, y'all can see our names and all, but we also have with us tonight Carol Tull, who is attorney that is going to be helping the board carry the meeting properly, and orderly, I should say. So at this time, are there anyone here tonight that would like to speak on behalf of themselves concerned in this case? If you would, please stand and state your name for the record.
Bob Hunter. I live at 5751 Windward Lane in Waterfront Club.
What does that street name begin?
Windward, one word. Windward Lane.
Thank you. Are there anyone else that wishes to speak tonight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
My name is Gray Stiers, G-O-A-Y, Stiers, S-T-Y-E-R-S. My office address is 434 Fayetteville Street, Raleigh, 27601.
Okay.
Back to your work with the tenants room? Did you need that address?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be speaking not as a witness, but as a representative of the planning department. Of course, you'll be hearing from our planning director, Ms. Stevens. We also have with us this evening, an email to testify, Dan Brubaker from South Carolina.
Okay.
Mr. Stevens. Stuart Tate, Caldwell Timber Partners. Do you have the address?
Anyone else?
Sorry, when you write that, send the instructions, I was trying to, Mr. Stiers there, but Shelley Stevens, Caldwell County Planning, and our business here is 2345 Boulevard Southwest.
Mr. Chairman, I tell you, how would you like us to, or if we've got some exhibits, if we have any problems pouring up on screen, but I also have them enlarged, which makes it easier for folks to see, just to illustrate some of the things we'll talk about tonight. Glad to talk from behind you, but that seems to hold a little off, and how would you like for me to...
That's fine, if you're good with that.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate it.
We're gonna need to swear in everyone who's going to testify, we just have the one Bible, so we're gonna wait and swear to many individuals, you know, before we testify.
Just swear something in the vigilance.
I believe so.
At this time, I would ask Mr. Bob Hunter, you can come forward if you will, for the camera's sake, if you will stand right over there, Mr. Hunter, and actually, I need you to swear in, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Come here with Bob.
Do you swear at the table, or should I do it before the self-renewal adjustment? Should I do it before the self-renewal? I can pretty much make it relatively simple this evening. The reason I'm here is on behalf of ourselves, my wife and myself, who live in this establishment of the actual development itself, we happen to be the only ones that live in the entire development to this point in time. We're looking forward to seeing neighbors someday. It's been six months without any of them so far, but the truth of the matter is, what's got me here is the fact that some of the owners that I've been in contact in the last few days are a little uptight, as well as myself, to be honest, that they don't really understand the mechanics of what's going on. We're in phase one, others are in phase two, and they're pretty much committed and purchased. This is phase three of the development that we're going to carry this evening, the end result of which is that we just had a meeting December 15th, something like that, last year, it was an annual meeting, and at that time, we were kind of thought everything was going along pretty smoothly, not expecting any issues or problems. Well, when you come before a rezoning board, there's issues and problems. There's only one reason to do that, it's because you didn't get approval for the zoning board. I personally sat on Berkeley County, and anybody's familiar with South Carolina, I'm the zoning board there, and I'm very familiar with how the process works, and I can honestly tell you, I don't know how many deviations I approved while sitting on the board, most of them dealt with simple setbacks and things of that sort, some of them were elevated, radio towers, and whatever variables, but I can honestly tell you, and all the time I sat there, I don't think I ever sat there and voted in favor of anything that basically where there were homeowners impacted, but were not made a price in advance of what's transpiring, and that's the concern here. There's a deviation because of that bridge issue, and the owners are concerned that suddenly, years from now, we're gonna come back and we'll get to flip the bill because something wasn't done properly. The mere fact that it didn't get approval at zoning tells you there's a deviation, and that's the reason I'm here to speak today, that we are not in favor of a deviation until we're afforded some time to meet directly with the developer and talk through these issues. That's all we're really asking for at this point in time. Any questions? Thank you, three times.
At this time, I'd like to call Ms. Shelley Stevens, and Ms. Shelley, with us.
Shelley, it's morning.
Yes.
So the board of adjustment has in your packets a staff report, actually, it's on your table there, and if you want to follow along, I'm just gonna go right through this, and David as well. So, as many of you are aware, based on information received in the mail, or the applicant's request of their application, Caldwell Timber Partners LLC is requesting a variance from the requirement of receiving a CLOMAR prior to new construction in a floodway. So, that specific requirement within the ordinance. So, under staff comments, in a clause of judicial hearing, decisions are to be made based on facts of the case and their compliance with the relevant ordinance, as opposed to subjective opinion. Allowing the variance request to be approved does not meet the variance requirements of the flood damage prevention ordinance, sets a precedent, and will also impact all those who choose to develop in the special flood hazard area of Stafford Creek. If the variance is approved, those who choose to build a special flood hazard area will be required to complete a hydraulic analysis that would not be required outside of the non-encouragement area if the variance was not approved. And staff has compared the applicant's request with the listed requirements for variance in the flood damage prevention ordinance, and found the following requirements in the ordinance are not met by the application. Under Section E, variance procedures, number nine, conditions for variances. A, the statement in the ordinance is, "Variances shall not be issued within any designated floodway or non-encouragement area if the variance would result in any increase in flood levels during the base flood discharge," and this variance request, if approved, would result in an increase in flood levels during the base flood discharge. And then, part E, "Variances shall only be issued upon Roman numeral 11, a showing of insufficient cause." And staff's statement under that is, "A variance cannot legally be issued after a project has begun. Also, one cannot be legally issued if a rise is created by the project, or if the project was not legally permitted." Roman numeral 2, "A determination that failure to grant the variance would result in exceptional hardship." Staff comment to that is, "The applicant cannot prove exceptional hardship that would not created by themselves. A self-induced hardship does not legally warrant a variance." And then, Roman numeral 3, in the ordinance, "A determination that the granting of a variance will not result in increased flood heights, additional threats to public safety, or extraordinary public expense, create nuisance, cause fraud, or victimization of the public, or conflict with existing local laws or ordinances." And staff's statement under that portion of the flood plan ordinance is, "The granting of this variance would result in increased flood heights, and would create a conflict with the state's model ordinance, and the county's local ordinance, which is the state's model ordinance, adopted per state recommendation." So those are my comments under, again, the relevant provisions that I feel were not met by the flood damage prevention ordinance. And then, I also have staff comments under various quotes I've pulled out from their application as well, and I might have to pause to take the application, because this is a lot of talk, so. Okay, so these are some selected provisions from the variance application, followed by my comments. The first one from the application quote, "Caldwell Partners now seeks the variance from the requirement of Article 5, Section F1B of the flood damage prevention ordinance, requiring a conditional letter of map provision, CLOMAR, prior to issuance of floodplain development permit and encouragement in the floodway." And my response to that is, "This is not a request made on the ordinance's requirements in the ordinance. They're just requesting a variance from a certain section of the ordinance." And then, another quote they have, statement in their application, is, "However, the ordinance fails to contemplate a scenario presented by Caldwell Partners, who cannot now obtain a CLOMAR, but can demonstrate by other means that it will be able to obtain a LOMAR, and adjust the flood mass accordingly." And planning's response to that is, "The ordinance addresses this, it states that the CLOMAR must be sought in advance of the project, and it addresses projects that are completed without having gone through this process, they are in violation of the ordinance's requirements." And then, another quote from the application is, "The report and its conclusions have been reviewed and approved by the state of North Carolina's National Flood Insurance Program, NFIP Coordinator John Brew Baker, in a letter dated November 21st, 2019, see attached letter noting no objection to the conclusions presented in the report." And then, planning's response to that is, "This is not the same as the state NFIP coordinator claiming the project is legal or approved to move forward, and that it meets the local ordinance's requirements, which it does not." And then, another statement in the application is, "In these unique circumstances, the variance from this technical requirement to obtain a CLOMAR is necessary for an otherwise permissible and approved development project to proceed." And staff's response to that is, "The project in question is not permissible or approved." And then, another statement that was pulled out from the application, "The findings of fact checklist, with each finding on which the board of adjustment will make its decision, immediately follows below." This is it within their application. And planning's response to that is, "These are only proposed findings that they have in their application. The board of adjustment actually does their own fact finding by law." And staff is noting that these findings suggested by the applicant insufficiently address requirements of the flood damage prevention ordinance, and do not meet the requirements of the flood damage prevention ordinance either. Another statement from the application is, "Phase three of the approved preliminary flat necessitates the crossing of Stafford Creek in order to connect phases two and three, in which roads are already under construction, and to avoid jurisdictional stream and wetland impacts in phase one and two." And staff's response to that is, "Denial of the variance does not prohibit the developer from crossing this stream to connect phases one and two." The application goes on to mention the location of the crossing as, quote, "necessary to completely avoid impacting wetlands and minimize stream impact," end quote. The basic location of the crossing would not have to be different if this project is completed in a legal fashion." And another statement from the application is, "In these respects, the location of the crossing, and thus the variance, is determined by neat conditions of the property, including its size, location, wetlands, stream, and topography." And again, per ordinance requirement, this is the response to that, "A variance must be requested before the start of a project, and permitting in a CLOMAR should have been completed before the start of the project as well." And then, another statement in the application is, "Finally, the design of the road network and the location of the road crossing of Stafford Creek was permitted through the NC Department of Environmental Quality, also known as DEQ, and the Federal Army Corps of Engineers, and are currently being updated based on new designs. Roads have already been surveyed, and construction has begun on either side of the crossing." And staff's response to that is, "Starting a project without getting the required permits of CLOMAR is not a legally valid reason to allow variance, as is suggested in the application in essence, quote, 'allow the project because it has begun.'" And DEQ and the Army Corps of Engineers do not enforce flood damage prevention ordinance's requirements that allow Caldwell County citizens to have flood insurance. And another statement that they make in their application is, "In order to comply with the strict letter of the flood damage prevention ordinance and obtain the preliminary CLOMAR, Caldwell Partners would, in theory, have to spend substantial time and money to remove the box culverts, and then obtain a CLOMAR based on original topography and flow of the creek." And staff's response to that is, "Monetary hardship of an applicant cannot be considered in a variance request." And then, another statement made in the application is, "Regardless, it would have no effect on the eventual LOMAR and floodplain adjustment, which is the ultimate outcome of the process anyway." And then, staff's response to that statement is, "Anyone could question the process that was used to allow the installment of the culverts, and whether that ordinance requirement, whether ordinance requirements will follow. Also, after the LOMAR process is complete, citizens may be required to spend more money to build, as any construction within the changed special flood hazard area of this creek will, if the variance is approved, require a hydraulic analysis." And another statement made in the application is, "A small increase will not adversely affect other landowners, and will not affect any structure whatsoever." And staff's response to that is, "If someone would like to build in this special flood hazard area of the stream, approving this variance would mean that they will have to complete a hydraulic analysis first." And another statement to make is, "Without the crossing, phase three would be isolated from other areas of the community, and services and amenities provided in those areas." Staff's response to that is, "The applicant is allowed to complete the stream crossing legally without a variance." And the final quote that I pulled out from their application to mention is, "Due to the partial construction that has already occurred in reliance upon previous engineering analysis, Caldwell Partners is simply unable to comply with the strict letter of the ordinance because it cannot obtain an official CLOMAR letter." And staff's response to that is, "Caldwell Partners is legally allowed to comply with the ordinance, and there is a valid way to obtain legal permits and a CLOMAR for this project." And the board of adjustment, I just wanted to note, will complete the fact finding for this case, and the staff's recommendation is to not approve the variance, because it does not meet requirements of the flood damage prevention ordinance.
I want to ask Ms. Stevens another question.
Kent, I have a question. We have not seen the staff report, have never seen it, is it possible to get a copy of it? Can you have that for the copy?
Before you start, I want to make one note that everyone on the board knows, that we have Mr. Brewbaker in the audience with us tonight, if you don't mind, Mr. Brewbaker. So, I'm sure there may be some questions, and we didn't put you on as speaking, but we can, and we would swear you in at that time, but I want everyone to know, make note of Mr. Brewbaker, what's his name. This time, I'll, but...
Ms. Stevens, I think everybody here in this room knows who you are, but you've got to keep in mind, we're making a record that may be reviewed by one or more courts in the future that don't have a clue who you are, so I want you to identify yourself. How are you doing, Lloyd?
Okay. I'm Shelley Stevens, I'm employed by Caldwell County, I'm the planning director.
How long have you been planning director for Caldwell County?
For approximately five years.
And would you tell us about your education, your training, and your degrees or certifications in the field of planning?
Sure. I attended undergraduate college at UNC Chapel Hill, and I studied public policy there, and I got my masters in urban planning, studying urban and regional planning at the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign, and I've worked in the private sector for planning, I've had several planning internships, and I've worked for a local council of governments in planning, working as specifically a planner for several local governments, as a contractor and planner, and then, I've worked here, as I mentioned, nearly five years. And I also have my AICCP certification, which is the highest certification you can get as a planner, you have to take a test to qualify for that.
Thank you. Now, this is actually an application for a variance, not from Caldwell County's zoning ordinance, but from Caldwell County's flood prevention ordinance, is that correct?
Correct.
I want to start on page one of your staff report, the statement that Caldwell Timber Partners LLC is requesting a variance from the requirement of receiving a CLOMR prior to new construction in the floodway, and I believe you pronounced that CLOMAR, is that correct?
Correct.
On the record, would you explain to us what a CLOMAR is?
It's a conditional letter of map revision, and our ordinance clearly states that it is necessary before certain projects. I think Dan Brubaker would probably be a better expert to specify everything about that, because, again, I don't have an engineering...
that, because again, I don't have an engineering degree, and in certain processes, using the flood damage prevention ordinance, an engineer is necessary to review certain products.
Well, without going into great engineering detail, is this some sort of approval that has to be obtained before there's some disturbance in the floodplain?
Yes, not in every scenario, but in this one, yes.
And does Caldwell Timber Partners contend in its application for this variance that the requirement of obtaining a CLOMR is a, what's the phrase that is used, an exceptional, what is the phrase that is used?
Hardship.
An exceptional hardship. Is that claimed?
Yes, I think you could summarize that from their application.
And why does Caldwell Timber Partners claim that being required to obtain a CLOMR would be an exceptional hardship for them?
Well, they mentioned, as I brought out in my statements here, they mentioned monetary difficulties, and they mentioned that they needed to cross the stream in this area. They mentioned several different reasons that they're claiming it's a hardship.
Did Caldwell Timber Partners do something without a permit that they were supposed to get a permit before they did?
Yes, they did.
What did they do without a permit?
Yeah, they put two culverts in a giant drainage area, a stream crossing.
And what permit were they required to get by law, by this ordinance, before they put those culverts in there?
They were supposed to get a floodplain development permit.
Did they do that?
They did not.
So why is it that getting a CLOMR now would be any hardship at all to Caldwell Timber Partners?
It is not legally speaking a hardship, because the reasons they give for it being a hardship are not valid. Like, why would it be difficult for them?
Yes.
Because they'd have to probably take the culverts out, restore the bank to original elevation, and then, you know, eventually put them back. That would be costly.
To the extent it's a hardship to get a CLOMR, is it accurate to say that that hardship was caused by Caldwell Timber Partners putting the culverts in without a permit in the first place?
Absolutely, yes.
So they created the hardship that they're asking to be relieved from by means of a variance. Is that correct? You have cited on the second page of the staff report, under Section E, variance procedures, that the variance provisions in the flood prevention ordinance say that you can't get a variance if getting the variance would cause a rise in the flood elevation level. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And what does Caldwell Timber Partners' own application say about what would happen if they're allowed to get this variance?
It would cause a rise.
How much of a rise?
I think it was like 1/2 of it. I would have to go back and look.
And you have also stated in the first paragraph of the second page of your staff report, and I believe later in the report as well, that if the variance is approved, people will be required to complete a hydraulic analysis that would not otherwise be required. Is that correct?
If they were to build in the changed special flood hazard area of Stratford Creek. They made reference to Stafford Creek, but it's actually Stratford Creek. Yes, that's correct.
And this hydraulic analysis, and again, I know you're not an engineer, but can you tell us basically what that is?
It looks at flood levels, and this would be because they chose to, not about by the ordinance requirements and the variance was approved. And it would cost money to any person who had to do this, any other resident affiliated with the developer.
So is it your testimony that granting the variance may cause innocent third-party property owners to have to get, go through some process in order to do their own development activity that they wouldn't be required to do if this variance is not allowed?
Correct.
And where did that information come from? Where'd you get that information?
The hydraulic analysis information?
Yes.
That we just discussed. I got that from Dan Brewbaker with the state.
And would that be an additional step and an additional expense that third parties wouldn't have if this variance is not allowed?
Correct.
That's your understanding?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Those are my questions.
I have, actually, because we have not seen this before, so we're digesting it on the fly, could I just ask for just a four or five minute recess? Just, and again, I'll make it very brief. I just want to make sure I understand what's in here, as I've seen it the first time. It won't take very long to talk to my client and my expert witness, to make sure I know how the property work, question of the word. It won't take long.
Absolutely. But before that, I want to back up a point that you made. Is there anyone on this board that has any, has or has had any business dealings with Caldwell Timber Partners? Or has any reason why tonight that they would feel like that they need to be removed from hearing this case? If now, please speak. Okay. Just wanted to make that for the record. Okay, we will take a five-minute recess.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I appreciate it. I'm going to go ahead and say.
Okay.
At this point, instead of trying to wrestle across examination, we'll just have our experts to address some of these issues, and I have my own.
Ms. Lackey, do you have anything?
Not of Ms. Stevens.
Does any board member have any questions of Ms. Stevens?
Thank you very much, Ms. Chairman. I'm going to, I'm going to scroll in, if I can get this flat box out of the way. So, you have any other? Do you share any other questions about here from all of the boards?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As I introduced myself earlier, my name is Gray Stiers. I'm the National Practice Group Chairman of the Green Fox Watchout, and am serving tonight as counsel for Caldwellton Partners. But even as I gave my address, it's 434 Banff Street. What's relevant here is that I grew up and lived my entire life on the Talbot River, 12 miles down from this property. I know the river, I've fished its waters, I've hunted its banks, I know its topography, I've hiked up and down the river, lived in typically most of my early life, except for one year I lived in Worthy. So I know this river, and I respect it, and I do not want to leave me to let it have any quality of my doing to it, that damaged that river and shoreline. But I do understand, having grown up here and had lived here, what it's like on the banks of this river. So I do have some firsthand knowledge of the property and the river in general. I'd like to start by saying something that you probably don't hear very often, and on behalf of my clients, and Stuart Burt Seder, and Bart Shaw, and we want to say that we're sorry. I want to say that right in front of us, say it now, let's say it again, that we're sorry that we're in this situation, and we didn't, we're sorry we made a mistake, quite frankly. And we did make a mistake. And we're coming here tonight to you to try to find some practical common sense remedy to fix the mistake that was created. We will contend that this is not going to set a precedent, it doesn't open the Pandora's Box, or it doesn't manage the ordinance, we're here simply to try to find what makes sense, given the situation that we were in. And if we could turn back the clock a year, we would turn back the clock. We would not have relied upon the engineers that we had in that time that told us that, you know, or that didn't tell us that we needed a flood development permit. I'm not going to disagree with what Ms. Stevens said. We did not get a flood development permit before putting in the watch culvert stand. Our engineers at that time had no, I did not tell us, we did not know that requirement was there. What we did know was that we had to have a 404 permit from the Army Corps of Engineers. We had to have 401 state water quality certification. And we had to have an erosion and sediment control permit, sedimentation erosion control permit from the state for this crossing, which we got. We knew we had those, and we did not realize at the time there was any other permitting requirements. Our engineers never informed us. We wish we could travel back in time, and as my grandmother lived up in Alexander County used to say, I wish we could put the cows back in the barn, but that barn door's been open, so we can't. The road crossing is necessary for the development of the property. This property has been rezoned by county commissioners for the waterfront club, specifically for this development. Based upon the rezoning, we had our land planners plant out the developed plan. And Mr. Hunter, I'm sure could come up here and show you which, where his house is located. But there's a kind of common space for others, there's basically Phase 1 and Phase 2, and now what we're trying to do is develop Phase 3 and ultimately Phase 4 up here, which belongs lots. This is Stratford Creek, right here. So to get from Phase 1 and 2 to Phase 3 and tie this together, there has to be a crossing through Stratford Creek. So this was the plan that our land planners and our engineers drew. The box culverts, there's a dispute as an appropriate way to cross that creek. I think that's undisputed. That is, that is a perfectly fine way to get across the creek. You have them all over the county. It's really not an issue. What is the issue is that we did not get a floodplain development, or it's what we did not, we were not told by our engineers, and we're sorry about that. We knew we had to jump through the hoops of the 404 permit for the Army Corps, we knew we had to get the 401, and we knew we had to get the sediment control, sedimentation erosion control from the state for this crossing, and we got all of those permits. And we know that it's typically the hard permits to get, the difficult permits to get. Our previous engineer, who is no longer working for us, I can assure you, you know, he had completed a hydraulic model that showed no rise in this area. However, we weren't aware that there were any issues at any time that would prevent us from installing those box culverts. And when we found out, the state apparently didn't agree with the results of that model, it was already too late, and the boxes were already installed. If we had realized at the time, you know, if we'd been told that by our engineer, he had done, told us what he should have done, then we would have filed the CLOMR. I mean, that would, that is something that we could have done at that time, was to file that CLOMR, which is a preliminary step in the process that allows, per se, like to Section F1B, the permit to forecast the effects of the road crossing. But once that would have been obtained, filing that CLOMR, then we would have applied for and received a development permit. We got the permit, and then we would have installed the box culverts at that point, that point in time. And then, once we installed the box culverts, presented the permit, then we would have, after post-construction, post-completion, we would have then filed what's called a letter of map revision, a LOMR. And a LOMR is what then determines the floodplain, flood hazard area on the creek. That's the operative legal step in the whole process. But reality, we, Stuart and Burke didn't know, they weren't told by the engineer, and it wasn't until those box culverts were in that we discovered the mistake. Once we realized we didn't have the permit that we needed, which we absolutely concede, I'm not trying to deceive anyone here, the facts are what the facts are, we stopped all construction, all that crossing at that point. Now, we did ask the board to, for an ordinance interpretation, since we were relying on the engineer's sealed plans to move forward, and that there was no rise, we asked that that be what your ordinance requires, and that that is what was sufficient, and we met that requirement. We asked this board, I understand it wasn't long in time, at the time, to deem that to be adequate, satisfied the ordinance, and the board denied that request three to three. And so, at that point, we started looking for another solution. So how did we get here tonight from that point? Now, I was hired to bring in, to start working on a solution, and a new, brand-new engineer was brought in, engineering firm, to look and see what could we do given this situation. And much of the concern, I understand, that was expressed at that hearing was whether this violated the FEMA regulations, whether this would violate the flood insurance program. There were really serious concerns, and so we knew that that was a nonstarter. We had to find a solution that was consistent with all the federal regulations and the state administration federal insurance program. So we asked our engineers, Ambassador Kennedy, we said, we want the very best water resources engineer in this state in private practice. Dan Brewbaker's a public sector, so the president kind of accepted him, and we said, we want the best water resource engineer. And we don't care, you know, if we had a relationship with him, we want an impartial, independent assessment of what our solutions are. And the engineer said, you don't have a relationship with Timmons Group, but Becky Ward's the very best water resource engineer to figure out, work with Mr. Brewbaker, figure out what's the solution that would comply with all of the federal and state requirements. So we hired Miss Becky Ward from Timmons Group to start working on a solution that would not have any impact on any upstream structures, and that would comply with all the regulations, even in the 100-year flood event. So Mr. Tate, Ms. Ward, myself, met with Mr. Brewbaker on October 2nd, and we tried to determine, and then we also met with the state's attorney, Mr. Rupaul, who represents the flood insurance program, and we said, we've got a situation, we're looking for a solution, we're looking for something that would comply with the federal regulations. And Mr. Brewbaker confirmed, and he will say this if you're asking, that if Miss Ward had designed a solution that would result in a rise of no more than one foot in the base flood elevation, that would be allowable under the FEMA regulations, 44 CFR 603 C10. He gave us that site, he gave us the regulations, and said, you'll comply with what's called C10 regulation. And we said, okay, let's figure out how to get that compliance, how to have less than one foot, so we would comply with that requirement. And Ms. Ward concluded that this requirement could be met by constructing three overflow bypass pipes or floodplain culverts, to make sure that in the event of a 100-year flood, in the event that the water in that creek, at that point was 11 and 1/2 feet high, in a 100-year flood, that it would not cause any structural, structural damage upstream, and that the total rise at the culvert itself would be less than a foot. And so she, that was the analysis, she said, it's going to be expensive, it's not cheap, but it can be done, because it meets the requirements. And Mr. Tate said, if that's the right solution, if that's what we need to do, we know it's going to be expensive, but we will do that. We will, we will construct those bypass culverts. Having satisfied all of those requirements, then I had a series of discussions with Mr. Lackey, and that led us to the interference application tonight. Now, you've heard, and I think you've all had the notebooks that we filed the application. So I'm not going to go through all of the notebook material. I will ask formally that it be moved in evidence. The material in there was reviewed by my clients, Mr. Tate is this morning in, he's verified that it is accurate. It was under my supervision, prepared under my supervision. And Miss Becky Ward, her hydraulic analysis, who you'll hear from in a few minutes, she prepared that piece of information and her report behind tab number 3. So we asked that be moved into evidence. So we asked that that be moved into evidence and be accepted in support of our variance application. As Ms. Stevens promptly said, she's been very thorough, that Section F-1B says, "No encroachment shall be permitted unless we get the CLOMAR," and that's been approved by FEMA, and the letter of map revision, key legal document, LOMAR, then must be obtained upon completion of the encroachment. The CLOMAR is, in this situation, in fact, a preliminary step, basically, of modeling pre-construction, pre-construction, of what the effect of the encroachment will be. So they can be determined if a LOMAR can be obtained and what that LOMAR looks like. And it is the issue of the LOMAR, as I said, which is the key operative legal step. It determines what's the future flood plain delineation. So as you heard Ms. Stevens said correctly, the CLOMAR is a step that should occur prior to construction. And it didn't happen. We asked the mistake we made. So what we've done, instead of the CLOMAR at the consultation with Mr. Brubaker, is to have Miss Ward to do a detailed hydraulic analysis, which is included in the notebook there, that with FEMA-accepted software, so it's done with the software that FEMA uses for this type of models, approved to comply with all the FEMA regulations. And then, we had the state administrator, Mr. Brubaker, review that and confirm that the modeling was correct, using the program, and that it would comply with the federal and state requirements, which we understood was the real problem from an earlier discussion. So you have your standard variance requirements in your ordinance, the four that you're very familiar with, the culvert zoning contacts all the time, and of course, you know what those are. As a result of the unique condition of the property, practical difficulties, unnecessary hardships, whether the variance secures the public safety and welfare, and is the variance possible or reasonable use of the land. So we have set forth, while we feel strongly that this variance meets all four of those variance requirements. In this, again, in this situation, the crossing is required because of the configuration of the land that is there. The, and we're here, Miss Ward talked about how this very much secures the public safety and welfare, that it makes possible a reasonable use of the land, consistent with the zoning that was put in place with county commissioners for this property, and the hardship at this point of taking out that culvert and redoing the CLOMAR, LOMAR, which I'll talk about after Ms. Ward speaks, which is completely unnecessary, and in fact, could well result in more upstream, an increase in upstream water levels in the event of flood, if we were allowed to move forward with the proposal we had before you. So in addition to those four, your ordinance does require a written report addressing 11 specific standards. So Ms. Ward's hydraulic analysis talks, supports the findings of those supplemented by Mr. Stuart Tate's, is a landowner's explanation of how the property was designed and laid out. So it, so that kind of lays the groundwork. Assistant to what Ms. Stevens already said, while we're here, what we're requesting, a practical common sense solution, we probably would find ourselves in. And I'd like for Ms. Ward now to talk to you a little bit about if this variance was granted, what she did, how she modeled it, and if this variance was granted, what it would mean to the river in the event of a hundred-year flood. So I have Ms. Ward step forward now, and I will step back, if you'll come follow me if you want. And let me just ask you, just, anyway, you want to stand? Oh, that's right, she has to be somewhere. And I'm also going to pass out two of the two maps that the board's going to be referencing. Maybe just take, want to pass it now, maybe the easiest thing. The first one shows the kind of map of the whole river at one inch to 200 scale, and the second one, put things through the area right around the culvert. So she'll be referring that testimony. But let me start by asking Ms. Ward, as we like to do with the Stevens, would you tell us a little bit about your qualifications background in education with regards to water resource management and the type of work you did in this case?
I have a civil engineering degree, originally in state, and then I did my master's degree.
Can you take it off a little bit?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'm quiet.
Certainly, you won't have to, it's going to be easier.
I have, my bachelor's degree from Michigan State University, and my master's degree in water resources from Penn State University. I've been practicing engineer for, I'm in my 40th year, and I specialize in water resources, especially stormwater events. And I've submitted a question to the state, and then quite a few times on projects, LOMARs, LOMARs, and no rises.
Given that Ms. Ward is somewhat sophisticated, I'm going to go ahead and.
I've had a cold. So we were, like they said, called in to just to help see what we could do to get the owners into compliance with the box culverts. So.
Two copies, here's your other copy.
There should be enough copies for Mr. Lackey to handle it, if you have anybody there.
We're sharing.
Thank you.
So the first thing we did was, we redid the modeling that the original engineer had done, and then we had a meeting with Mr. Brubaker to see what we could do, if there's any potential way to permit or get the culverts into compliance to move forward and be in compliance with FEMA. And that's when it was mentioned to look at the 44 CFR, C-10 regulations. And just so everybody understands, there's two ways to, and I don't know if you can tie it or not, but you can either look at a stream, this is a limited detailed study, and it has non-encroachment areas. So when you have that, it's a little bit different. Those non-encroachment areas were put in there to help municipalities to regulate what a floodway would be. So if you have a detailed study, you have the floodway that's actually set, and when you look at the maps, you'll see the little floodway line, and it's usually hatched in between that floodway. So when we were talking to Dan, he said that we could look at that and see if, according to FEMA, we could look at the stream with this regulation where you don't look at the non-encroachment area, you regulate the stream based on the flood plain. And what that means is you're looking at cumulative impacts, so that you look at all the cumulative impacts in the stream to make sure there's not more than one foot of rise in that whole area. So that's why this is called a hydraulic analysis instead of a no-rise, is because we're, we looked at it as far as cumulative impacts, so that any impacts in the floodway, flood plain would not increase the water surface elevation one foot. So when we, we looked at the box culverts, and just with the dual box culverts, and there was too much of a rise, so to mitigate that, to try to be in compliance with this C-10 requirements, we had to design three box, or three 72-inch round culverts in the flood plain. And the, the box culverts are in the main channel, which are, is about, they're pretty appropriate for the stream, where you wouldn't want the real big culverts in there, and really kind of damaging the stream. So the box culverts kind of fit in the stream. We have a flood plain that's about five feet higher than the stream channel, and those three round culverts would sit up on the flood plain. So what happens during small storm events, the water just goes through the box culverts. When you start getting into the larger storm events, that's when the flood plain gets activated. Once the water goes into the flood plain, then it goes through the three 72-inch culverts. So if, with the design of the two existing box culverts, and we had them go back and survey those, so that imerts in and out of the boxes are what is actually installed in the creek right now, with those box culverts and the three 72-inch culverts, then we did meet the C-10 requirement, we had nine tenths foot of rise. And as you can see on this map, which is the, kind of zoomed in area, that nine, and it's kind of upside down. Oh, it is upside down. No, that's better. So you can see, I tried to put on here what the change in water surface elevation was. So you can see that the flow is going down the page if you have it orientated this way. So downstream, we have a little bit of a drop in water surface elevation, but as you go up, that point nine foot is right at the cross section, the upstream cross section right above the culverts. And then the next cross section, it goes down a little bit, we have a point eight foot. And as we continue further up the stream, you have another map, that's your bigger The, you can see the water surface elevation's changed, so this cross section is the point eight, here's our culvert crossing. And then as you go up to this next cross section, it goes down, it's a minus four tenths of a foot on that cross section. And then as you go up to this one, this cross section is 9062, can you see that on your sheet? That one, the water surface elevation is going up point three. This is the, and then at the FEMA cross section, 9800, it's down to a minus point two. So it's kind of going up and down, but that's also a factor of the distance, sometimes the distances between cross sections, because the model is kind of adjusting. This is the property line, and then as we go across the property line, it goes, there is a rise of point oh one foot, and that point oh one continues, but ends right before Baton, if I can correct where I got it, or.
Baton.
Baton, Baton School, it ends before Baton School. We didn't look at the analysis by putting additional cross sections in here, the cross sections between 7613 and 9062, that's almost 1,500 square, 1,500 linear feet. So by putting some additional cross sections, we might have been able to get this to improve so that we weren't having the tenth, but I don't know because I didn't, I didn't do that, to see if I could get the model to kind of balance out before I hit the property line here. So that's kind of what we did with the analysis. We sent it into Dan to see if he would concur that our analysis, that he had conferred with our analysis, and that's when he sent the letter back and said he didn't have any, he conferred that he didn't have any. I forget exactly what the statement was, but he conferred with our analysis. So I think it surprised me with the staff report, I wish we had had this before, because I would probably be able to address it a little bit more. And then we asked Dan a couple of clarification questions. But I think to, is it okay if I address those two comments? What, in the staff comment was on the last page, that was talking about citizens that are required to spend more money. And so I got clarifications a minute ago from Dan, and I think that Dan is saying that if we have a LOMAR, then whatever the extent of that LOMAR is, then it has to be in compliance with the C-10 regulations. So I think that's what they were talking about, that if anybody then did build in this flood hazard area, where we've got a tenth of a foot, then they would have to be in compliance and do a hydraulic analysis. So they would have to be looking at cumulative impacts instead of going for a LOMAR, LOMAR on that. So I think if we would have known that, I would have tried to run the model to see if we could contain, if we didn't have, we could get that tenth of a foot to not extend beyond our property line. Does that explain?
I may ask you a few more questions to help us. Any questions you'd like to add, because, no, I'll ask you some questions. So, so let me back up. You talked about nine tenths of a foot rise. So are you talking about a normal flow, a typical non-rain event having a rise because of the other culverts at that point?
No, this is based on a hundred-year storm event, because that's the FEMA regulatory flow.
So even if, I think you determined a bar called the frequent storm event, you have frequent storms, that's, that's not a hundred-year storm event either?
Well, the hundred-year storm has a 1% chance of occurring in any particular event.
And so all this modeling of the rise, it, the culvert's not creating the flooding, you're talking about an incremental change in a hundred-year flooding now, is what you, is what you're announcing this?
Yes, this is based on a hundred-year storm, that is correct.
And I think you also calculated that at the culvert level, in a hundred-year flood events, the elevation of creek would be 11 and a half feet high from the bottom of the stream.
Yes, I believe that was correct, it's approximately 11 feet.
Given the topography of the creek, would that, would that be, I know you have analyzed it, would that be generally the height of the creek, you know, for a.
Yeah, it just depends on the cross section locations. I think the cross sections down here are a little bit wider, so it may be a little bit higher in here, it just depends on the topography, because we're talking about the same flow, it just is how it's spread out in the cross sections.
So you have topographical lines on this map as well. And the topographical lines, you know, in certain areas are very, very close together. For those of you that are not familiar with the topographical maps, can you explain what does that mean with regards to banks, and what does that mean regarding how an inch or two inches or three inches of flow out from the stream?
Right, well, I think if you have a very wide, broad area, and you're talking about an inch of rise, it could extend that, the width. But if you're looking at this topography, we've got pretty steep banks in here, so that one inch of width would be, however that projects vertically. So if you have a very steep vertical bank, then that one inch would be confined to a shorter area than if you had a very broad flood plain.
And in fact, so the dash block line is the existing hundred-year flood plain as of day. The red dotted line would be the extent of the flood plain after the street crossing, road crossings, is that correct?
Yeah, this we illustrated on the map, yes.
And explain, kind of summarize again, why those lines are basically inseparable? You know, you can't even tell the difference between those lines on that map.
Well, on this one, it's a 300 scale map, so it gives you a thought what an inch of water, or a little bit more than an inch, would be on this 300 scale map. You can see it a little bit better on this map down here, because it's actually a better scale, it's a larger scale, it's a one inch equals 40 feet map.
Because a practical matter, as you move, what happens to those two different lines as you move further away from the crossing?
Yes, they, they converge onto the line because we've got less rise as we, as we go upstream.
So as a practical matter, those lines converge, and the impact of that three inch, two inch, one inch is less and less as you go further away from the crossing.
That would be correct.
So one final question, should I, Dan? So this was confusing to me. Why, why is this negative four and negative three and negative two, and then you have a plus one? And what does that tell us about your, can you refine that modeling anymore by doing other types of modeling at different intervals?
Yes, we could, if we added some additional cross sections, it's just, some of it is because this is, this is more of an appropriate length, 500, I think is kind of a good length. So these cross sections are okay in this area, but we have 1,500 feet where we're relying between this cross section and this cross section. And so it would be helpful to get a little bit better of what the impacts are upstream. If we had probably put two more cross sections in here, I could get it at more, a little bit better intervals, and that way we could kind of see if it really is going from minus point oh four here to plus point oh three at this cross section, it might even it out a little bit. Now, I don't want to be deceiving on seeing what that minus point four and point three, because the water surface elevation is going up all the time. This is just in comparison to the base flood elevations of that particular cross section. So the water surface elevation slightly is dipping in that area, it's still continuing to go up, if that makes sense. Quite amusing, I think.
Ms. Ward's available for crossing navigation by Mr. Lackey. I just like your questions, if you need anything.
I don't really quite.
Just want to have any questions? And I'm going to come back up. So yeah, if you have anything to ask me now or ask me later. Let me finish and then I'll finish my comments. Ms. Ward's here to answer questions. And again, she and Mr. Brubaker were very close to the others. So they can also perhaps explain some of the technical aspects if you have them. So let me just kind of wrap up, you know, where I think we are and what we're asking the board to do. First of all, we're not asking for a redo. We're not asking for a free pass. Make sure, make that butt up front. And once we realize the mistake, we immediately stop construction. We hired the very best hydrogeologists, we hired our engineers. We want the white person to do the right analysis. And that analysis is a very expensive design that would limit the flood plane, I shouldn't say flood plane, yeah, base flood elevation to less than a foot at the culvert itself. And we're willing, conditions we talked about tonight, we're willing to abide by that solution. We worked, Division Brubaker, Flood Insurance Program Administrator confirmed the redesign, met all the federal and state departments. We filed a variance application, piled all the necessary evidence, laid notebooks. And we're willing for you to impose conditions on the variance. And I'll talk about that at the very end as well, what those conditions might look like. This is not the position that any landowner wants to be in. If you've done land and all the work, you know that. We don't want to be here. But we realize that these are the steps that are necessary to try to find a solution that will work. Second thing, this is for this precise reason. Granting a variance in this particular situation does not set a precedent or open the door for others to try to avoid lumbar. The proposal that we are presenting tonight, Ms. Ward, is more expensive than it would have been for us to have gotten a lumbar and a lumbar. And the process is such that we're in a unique and unfortunate situation, quite frankly. And no one would willingly put their bills in this position. So this is not a precedent that's going to open the door for anyone else to ever want to come before you and ask for this type of variance. This will not jeopardize your flood insurance program here in Caldwell County. Mr. Brubaker confirmed that. This is only a federal program and we're meeting all the federal requirements. And this type of situation, we contend is precisely in why you, as a board, are giving discretion to use your judgment to find a way to accommodate situations by granting a variance. If you look in the flood plain variance, it has its own set of definitions. It has a definition in there of the variance, of the flood plain ordinance. And that variance definition is a grant of relief from the requirements of the ordinance. And that's the purpose, as you know, as the board sitting as a board of adjustment. You know that's what variances are there for, to grant relief when it's in the public interest. So when you have inevitable rises, you're going to have, under your flood plain, when you put a road crossing like this, the ordinance requires the lumbar and lumbar process to comply with it and not have to come before you with the variance. And that's the one explicit process that's in there. It's the only mechanism to kind of accommodate a rise like this absent of variance. And then the ordinance says it requires anyone seeking a variance to make those eleven findings, to have someone like Ms. Ward come up with a solution, and to present competent material and substantial evidence in the form of expert witness testimony and expert reports to show how we meet all those eleven. Again, you have only one mechanism in the entire ordinance that allows for a road crossing like this that's going to cause some rise upstream, however minimal. If you don't allow for the possibility of a variance for the only mechanism that's in the entire ordinance, then you've basically taken the variance process, which is three pages of the ordinance, completely out of the ordinance and made it in essence a nullity, a non-sensibility. You can't apply it in this situation. When did you apply it for this wise situation? I mean, it's the only, it's the only mechanism in the ordinance for us to build a crossing. Yes, we made a mistake, but yes, this is exactly where a variance can come in and provide relief. If you can't provide it here, you never can provide it anywhere. Example of what I mean by that, the ordinance written. If you look at the eleven criteria, you have the criteria J. And criteria J says that one of your determinations is a variance you consider, the expected heights, velocity duration, rate of rise, son of the transport of floodwaters, and the effective wave action. Something that is entirely analyzed in detail by the hydraulic analysis, by Ms. Ward. That criteria would make no sense that in there, there isn't some possibility of a variance to allow an equation that affects the height of your base flood elevation levels. Now, Ms. Dana is correct that the variance then says in another section that variances aren't allowed if the variance would result in an increase in flood levels during the base flood disruption. So in essence, you've got inconsistent provisions that you've got to make a determination about in your judgment. You have a variance process which grants relief. The only mechanism that's in there that allows for a rise, you've got criteria which contemplates a rise in the VFD levels. So we would contend that there's three reasons that it makes sense to allow a variance under the ordinance in this situation because you've got to make a decision between these inconsistent provisions. First, I think you have to read in that section E9B that says no variances or floodlines in the context of the entire ordinance. Shouldn't be able to pull that one provision out. You should be able to read it in the context of the purpose of the ordinance, the purpose of compliance with FEMA regulations, the purpose of compliance with National Flood Safety Program, the purpose of your general variance criteria. Whether they're in unique conditions of property, they make it a variance appropriate, whether they're practical difficulties or hardships, whether your granting a variance secures the public safety and welfare, and whether it makes possible reasonable use of the land and substantial justice will be done. You have to read it in the context of the overall purpose of the ordinance. You can't just pick out that one provision and hang your hat entirely on that. One thing I will note, your land, I haven't looked closely, but most jurisdictions in North Carolina says that you can't get a, that hardship cannot be of the applicant's own making. It's often a land use zoning context. That language is not in the flood plain ordinance. It says, except for hardship. The provision that says hardship not of the applicant's own making, that is not in the language of your ordinance here. So I can now talk about that. It's different from your land use provisions from this provision. I've talked about being in the context of the overall ordinance. Secondly, you know, you should give the ordinance, you should read the entire ordinance to give effect of its purpose. And its purpose is to avoid flooding upstream, control flooding. If we were to take out the culverts, if we were to go back and do a lumbar and comply with the ordinance, we would not have to put in those three bypass culverts that limits the flood elevation gain at the culvert, at the crossing, at less than a foot. We have more flexibility, we have more ability. If we just follow lumbar and we follow lumbar, then we're not constrained by that one foot height elevation, this nine tenths at a hundred year flood. There would be more elevation in the flood, base flood elevation, more increase. And it would be cheaper if we went through the lumbar process rather than what we're proposing today. The purpose of the ordinance would be satisfied if the variance were granted. And third, you as a board have the discretion, use your judgment to find variances from the strict letter of the ordinance. And we're asking, that's exactly what we're asking you to do. It's your judgment, it's your discretion, but you have that authority as a board. In this case, if you were to deny the variance, it would be a substantial injustice. And we're talking about a lose, 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 lose proposition. If you were to deny the variance, certainly the applicant would lose because they would have to go back and put out the culverts, try to do a lumbar. It takes, we're talking about a 24 month delay in the construction process. If you're in the construction business, you know what 24 months of not being able to build a crossing would mean. It would be lose for the applicant. But there's three other loses. It would also be a lose for the future residents, like Mr. Hunter, who his neighbors would like to live in phase three. Or maybe like Mr. Hunter lives in phase one and phase two, would like to have access to late farm amenities that are designed to be put into phase three and he can't get there. So it would be a loss to the residents who would like to live there. Third, it would be a lose for the county's tax base. And I've got the calculations here. I'm glad, the day we subdivide and plant these lots, the tax value of the county on this land goes from $17,000 to $43,000 if not a single house, not a single shed, not a single ramp is built. That day, the county is going to get an additional $26,000 in tax revenue every year. And that is going to increase exponentially once houses are built. So you're not talking about the value of planted lots. You're talking about the value of houses in all those lots. So it's going to be a lose for the county and lost revenue during the time period that we go through the delays to be in the lumbar and lumbar. And fourth, it would be a loss for the creek. To take those culverts out of there is going to require, is going to involve some damage to the creek. The state, DEQ Water, Surface Water Body, will not want us to do that. And there's going to be damage to the creek. And there will, and if we go through lumbar process, we don't have to constrain flooding to the extent that we are willing to do so under this variance with the three bypass culverts and flood plain to ensure the water comes through. So what we believe in this circumstance, what would be gained by not granting this ordinance will be in exact same place 24 months from now than we are today, except that we won't have to build those three bypass culverts. And we'll file the lumbar map provision, which is the operative document that will then redefine the flood plain that we would have gotten if we had filed the lumbar in the first place. So we will be in the exact same place, except we will not have what the board will say is the better solution for the sake of creek. Now, to grant this, we do think you should absolutely condition the variance, as you are allowed to do under the ordinance, on conditions to make sure that the analysis of this board and the proposal that, the proposal that we've set forth with the three bypass culverts that would result in these red lines are in place. So we think that it would be appropriate to place those conditions. We also think that, one thing that's not there but we can address is that for any property on creek up to the property line, basically Caldwell Partners owns all this property. We can have restrictive covenants on that property, ensure that nothing is built in the flood plains. In the flood hazard areas, we will be willing to agree to those conditions as well. Ms. Ward feels pretty confident she can't guarantee, but if she did the analysis with these cross sections crossing together, we're going to be right at zero when we get to that property line. She just did the modeling of the cross section that crosses, I don't know, to each other. So with these conditions, the purpose of the ordinance is to satisfy. There's not going to be flooding upstream. The creek is better preserved, the county gets tax revenue sooner. You're not unnecessarily having us pull the culverts out and put them back in. This is a classic case where variance is absolutely appropriate. This is precisely why the variance mechanism is there for use of discretion. So that's all that we have. I think it's, I hope the facts are not in substantial dispute here. I think it's your determination of how to apply the ordinance. We tried to come up with a solution and we asked, and that is common sense. We're going up to Felt County, my family's down in Center County. They would try to do a thing by common sense. What makes sense? And what I felt was provocative in the very beginning is we wanted to find a solution that makes sense. And this makes sense and we would ask respectfully that you, the parents, were requesting. I'm happy to answer questions, Mr. Church, if you have. And Ms. Ward's happy to answer questions and we have to address this the best that we can tonight. Again, I'll, again, we're sorry this happened. We're sorry we didn't apply for the lumbar. It would have been easier for us to have done so, but it's not coming back. Thank you for your time and attention, Ms. Ward.
Mr. Cyrus, are you going to be copying any of the witnesses?
No, I mean, I mean, the information we presented is the notebook documentation with the analysis. I mean, the facts really aren't in dispute here. Yes, we have to go through and get the evidence into the record. We have to get the testimony from Ms. Ward. We have to get the testimony from Ms. Stevens. We have to put the documents in. But I think that will conclude our case, Mr. Shaw.
Just for the record, we should put the notebook in evidence.
Yeah, I tried to do that earlier. So if I, I would ask, Mr. Chairman, without objection, the notebook comes into evidence. Two maps that were not in the notebook are these two maps here. So that Ms. Ward spoke to. And she would, and we would also ask that those two maps labeled exhibit.
Exhibit one and two.
Exhibit one and two, I think were appropriate. I also ask that judicial purposes of completeness makes the record need. Since we are relying upon 44 CFR 60.3, we would just ask that, that those federal regulations that show that we comply, that we're complying with, that, I'm just going to mark that exhibit three if I may, and in that, and just that the regulations is just so that would be in the, in the, it's just, this is just revading the federal regulations. No commentary to that. So with the notebook, application and supporting documentation, including Ms. Ward's hydraulic analysis, with the exhibit twenty-two maps showing the red line, which would be the new flood plain post-construction along with the current flood plain maps. And with exhibit three, which would be the federal regulations that we are complying with, proceeding this fashion, that would conclude our case. I'm happy to answer your questions if you have.
One question, just for my, if you ask me something. The original engineer who was hired to do this, do they properly last any insurance that they have on this early business?
To our knowledge, they are. And we have not yet concluded what rights, concluded what efforts they have, what rights before.
And what event or inspection maybe that raised that was an issue here?
I want to, so I want to ask either Mr. Day or Mr. Shaw, they've actually come up with that timeline. The engineer indicated, if I remember correctly, the engineer indicated after the box culverts were already in place, that Mr. Brubaker had questioned and comments about the data analysis that he performed.
I can actually speak to that because that was going to be my question.
Thank you.
Because we've already looked at that back in June. and there was an email from, from Mr. Brubaker on March 31st saying that strongly recommend that the developer apply for a clover rather than continue to pursue the no-rise. And the engineer agreed with him. And how long does it take to get approval? And so I know you said that, that the owner and the design team, once you realized that something was wrong, stopped, but it sounds like, and I'm going back, and I apologize for that. We probably can't consider that, but, but it doesn't look like.
My understanding is the box culvert, the engineer may or may not have known that the box culverts had not, had already been put in place by the time of that email. Is that correct?
And can I speak?
You need to be sworn in. Yes, you should speak, quite frankly, and I think you need to be sworn in. And I think this is an issue. The engineer had never communicated that there was no reason we couldn't put the box culverts in. We put the box culverts in before that email was sent. So again, that's why it was too late. We're glad you're sworn in, Mr. Church.
We've actually, just to answer the question on the emails, and I'm not sure.
We get him to identify himself, please.
This is Stuart Tate, living in Charlotte, 1031 South Caldwell Street.
What is your association?
I'm one of the owners, Caldwell Timber Partners. To be very blunt, I'm not sure when that email was written, but we saw that email way after the fact. We found out after the fact that Mr. Brubaker did not agree with our engineer, and there had been back and forth apparently for a pretty long time on the no-rise. We'd never done a no-rise, to be, to be candid. We, we, like, like you said, we did not understand we needed to have a county floodplain permit. We had the Corps of Engineers, we had the erosion control. We thought we were good to go. And our engineer candid, and we probably didn't ask the right question, but our engineer did not let us know that we were in violation and he was permanent. And so he knew we were marching forward, and we're construction guys, and we're building the crossing. And as soon as we found out that Mr. Brubaker didn't agree with the no-rise, we stopped. I mean, we wished, believe me, that we'd found out a week earlier, because we didn't have them to put the boxes in. You know, I would say we're extremely sorry. We certainly wish we didn't do it, and as soon as we found out it was an issue, we stopped everything. And I would just say from our standpoint, you know, we want the right answer. We're willing to spend a lot of money. We spent a ton of money to get to where we are now. This has not been cheap at all. We've already lost nine months on the project. But in our opinion, if we could keep the boxes in and do the lomar, which we think is ultimately the right answer, rather than pull the boxes out, disturb the creek, and again, we don't think we're going to have to put in the three 72-inch pipes if we do the lomar, the clover, excuse me, if we do the clover. So there'll be actually more of a rise, which is okay, if you do the clover and the lomar. It's not against my understanding. So we think we're going to get to the right answer. We just get there quicker. It's better for everybody to come and get some more taxes. And, you know, we feel like it's a, it's a common sense protection solution. So happy to answer any questions.
I have a question.
Sure.
Go ahead.
The engineer, do they have any prior experience in call book, Ellen? Did you know of her?
Well, they're, I mean, I think it's on record, they're out of Oregon, so West Consultants. So I absolutely believe so, yes. I mean, I think they're fairly well-respected, and that's why we hired them. They're a big firm, they're a local firm. We actually wanted to hire more local firm than a Charlotte firm, because we felt like they were know people, know the land, know the lay, know the topography. So, I mean, by, you know, at least our due diligence prior, that good reputation, you know, they all were certified, they had done all this stuff before, and it obviously didn't work out. So it's unfortunate.
Mr. Chair, we, we've heard a couple of times about this would, would increase the tax base in Caldwell County, but in what we're doing here as a board adjustment, we can't consider that. We have to look at the ordinance itself.
Those are correct.
I have a couple of questions for Mr. Tate.
I have, I have a couple of questions. And I'll start with the point that you made earlier in the fact that your client has went to an astronomical expense to get to this point today. And my question would be, why don't tear it out after our June meeting? And we understand we wouldn't be getting the three box culvert, or the three 72-inch pipes, but if that thing was torn out and the proper elevation put in there, we wouldn't need those. So I'm having a hard time understanding, instead of just doing that and spending less money, why are we here today? I just want to, it's a sort of an admission.
No, I, I, I'm going to speak myself. And Mr. Brubaker may disagree with me, and she's welcome to do so. We came away from meeting with him optimistic that we found a solution that would work. And then, again, their perception may be different than my observation, but we met with Ms. Stevens, Mr. Lockey in the third week in October, and we felt that we found a solution that would work. And I didn't think we would ever be in a bearin' situation. I thought there was some other ways that we could find a solution that was going to be acceptable to the county. And so we kept thinking, all right, this is, there are ways that we can get there that, to us, this is the right, to us, is the right answer. Going back and tearing out those culverts was the, I would say we felt committed and passionate that, dude, that's the wrong thing to do. These guys want to do the right thing, and we think tearing out those box culverts, going through the process, and then putting them back in without the bypass culvert is the wrong thing to do. And they want to be known as a quality developer that's doing the right thing for the county. Also, I will say, Caldwell County is a popular place to move to. We think the river is very popular, and there also is a function of time. If, if, if any of you are in development or stretching your land, we think that there's a demand for this community, and we thought that this would be a quicker process to be going through. Quite frankly, we may have been wrong in that judgment.
Now, let me add to that. I think you hit on it. If we'd known in June what we know today, it would be cheaper and quicker, more than likely, for us to have ripped the boxes out.
Okay. Period. I'm good with that. I've been sitting here saying, since I've been reading this, why am I missing something?
Everything has taken a lot longer and been a lot more expensive. We thought we were going to come to a solution with you guys quicker than we have.
Actually, with the county staff.
With the county, yeah, with, with everybody, right? And I mean, so, you know, again, hindsight, again, a couple, there have been several missteps. We would have ripped them out in June, and it would be cheaper, and we'd be well on our way with the clover, and it would be a better solution. I certainly give you that.
All right, and secondly, to that same question, what happens on the downstream invert of that, those triple 72s? Are you going to direct a channel? I mean, what happens to those property owners that are downstream of that, that are all of a sudden, at a hundred-year event, going to receive that kind of volume?
Ms. Ward's done a scour analysis, I think.
Yeah, we did a scour analysis and a report for the homeowners, and we designed the river rapids. They had to go through permitting, and we were looking at what you need, if you're trying to get permits together. And we designed a plunge pool and a rock cross vein and to stabilize and transition all of that on the inside of the floodplain and the outside of it. So, yes, we've done all of that, and actually, I do have.
So behind tab number five, there's actually two documents. The hydraulic analysis, the blue sheet of paper, and my, my copy, and then the scour analysis that addresses that it will not be damaged in that. It's a great question, Ms. Ward, but we need to actually go.
All right, now, in that proposal, who maintains the plunge pool? Who would maintain the rock placement? I mean, because, you know, we all sit here and hope and think that it may never be used. So if it's never used, oh, well, it's going to grow up in trees, and it's going to grow up, and things are going to obstruct the floodwater. So my question is, is that something that the homeowner association is going to maintain? Who would be in charge of maintaining that?
I'd certainly say, I hope that the HJW.
Yeah, well, the developer, we, we would be on the hook for it until we turn it over to the HJW, which is what Mr. Hunter can say.
He's reading me, he's reading me up.
Gentlemen, let's assume that you approve this contingency, or this variance. What happens if it goes south? It falls back on the homeowner. The fact that the homeowners haven't had an opportunity to be involved in this to this point is what's wrong. If we approve it with them, I'm not saying we will, but it's going to go a long ways for convincing. But without, without our involvement, and suddenly we pick up the cost because they've moved on, that's not going to go over well.
I understand that, Mr. Hunter. That's why I bring up the question.
Thank you. I've been raising my hand.
I saw you, I was going to get to you.
Okay.
Can I just, can I say one thing about the plunge pool? The plunge pool was designed to dissipate energy coming out of the double box culvert. So that has to be installed either way, because it's just a function of dissipating that energy as it comes out of the culvert that we're not providing scour back on the head wall or unwinding the culvert. So that's, that has to be designed. We ended up putting riff ramp on to transition into the 72 inches and then out back into the creek. If you look at the creek, it's, it's kind of in a bow shape. So the floodplain culverts are on that floodplain that have a good transition. Because you're married, there only can be access when floodwaters come off. So there's a good transition in and in back as the water receives back into the channel. And were those details included in that report? Well, there should be details that we provided with that scour analysis. So we had to use scour for the head wall.
I have a couple of questions. Can we, remind you, again, swearing in, I've got a question, a clarification question for Mr. Brubaker. I would like at this time to ask Mr. Brubaker to come forward.
I, I had some questions for Mr. Tate, before we move on to another witness, please.
No, you're fine, absolutely.
Mr. Tate, did I hear you testify that you and the other folks in Caldwell Timber Partners didn't know that you needed a no-rise certification?
We did not know we needed a floodplain permit from the county. Floodplain development, what's the technical term for that?
Floodplain development.
Yeah.
How long have you been in the real estate development business?
I've never gotten one of these permits. My partner and I have already been working on it for 12 years, at least. 12, 12 years. And we've done a handful of developments. This is a larger one compared to what is normally done, but we were not aware we needed a county permit.
Well, you, your engineer that you had initially did two no-rise studies and certifications, did?
I think he did one, for sure. But again, we were unaware of what's going on at the time, but he may have advised on it. So he maybe took, he maybe did, I don't know if there were technically two or not. I do know he tried to work with Dan after the fact to change the no-rise to get, to satisfy Dan.
Were you present at the hearing before the Board of Adjustment? And you guys appealed for the no-.
I was not, my partner brought it, but I was actually not.
Oh, okay. All right, so you didn't give. And you're aware that your engineer did submit no-rise certification to the county.
Yes, after the fact, yes, absolutely.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Mr. Brubaker, will you come forward? You want, you want to hit me? I just, clarification statement from my own education or refreshment. But 100-year floodplain is a 1% chance that in any given year, a major flood event can occur, correct?
See, area be inundated has a 1% chance of being inundated in any given year. A minimum 1%.
Is it not also correct that multiple locations in the state of North Carolina, including this area, have experienced multiple 100-year floods in recent, as it be 10 years? And it's not tied to any 100-year time span, correct?
That's correct. It's, in fact, the NFID generally frowns on the term 100-year flood.
So to construct it, exactly. So to try to construct it, or put it in the construct that, you know, an event can only happen once in 100 years is a missed option.
Yes.
For Mr. Stire, you posed a question, why have opportunity for a variance if you don't have the opportunity?
We're variance, yeah.
My question would be under E9D, variances shall only be issued prior to development permit. So I would argue that the variance would be valid and could be presented if it was prior to the development permit. And also, E3, where it says, states that the determination of granting of a variance will not result in increased flood heights. You contend that the process would result in an increase in rise if you followed the process. How you reflect an increase as .09, and Ms. Ward, you may want to speak to that. That only leaves a less than .1 foot rise and, or increase to comply with the VFD, correct?
Right.
So my, I guess my question, and as, to back up, with the appeal, I actually sided with, with your clients, which, knowing my background, not surprising even to me. I think actually there was some others that were probably very surprised with my vote. The problem is now we're here for a variance, and although I, I would probably contend that a lot of what you're saying is factual and probably makes the most sense, unfortunately, we have to function within the construct of our floodplain ordinance. I don't see how anything being presented can fit within that. I mean, E9D alone states that the variance can only be presented prior to the development permit, and unfortunately, we're way past that.
Yeah, you, I may just concur, Mr. Brubaker. I will say that the modeling is very, very conservative. I mean, the purpose for modeling is to try to prevent flooding. So, and again, you can also refine the modeling. That's why we think it's probably zero at the floodplain line. But we are confident, and there, that's why we're also very confident that we can get the lomar, because, and the lomar is a post-construction observation and reporting. So by, we're really putting our neck out with that condition that says we have to get a lomar in order to be able to sell the lots whatsoever. And I hear what you're saying about prior to. All I can, all I can respond is that we have tried to proceed toward what we thought was the right solution.
And I think, I truly believe that with what Ms. Ward presented, with emails and conversations with Mr. Brubaker, I, I think you could probably comply with the other conditions of the variances, but I'm going to need somebody to tell me how you can get me past 9D. I just, I don't see it, I'm sorry.
Again, again, I don't want to split hairs.
I'm not trying to.
So it's prior to development permit approval. So if this variance were granted, we never received a development permit. If this, if this, if this variance were approved, we would then apply for development permit. So with regards to 9D, variances shall only be issued prior to development permit approval. It is, we are post-construction, yes. We're post, you know, what we should have done, but we are actually prior to applying for the permit to construct this road across this intersection. So again, I don't want to split hairs here, but I said, one could say that we haven't, we haven't applied for the development permit subject to the variance. So we're not, we're not, in some respects, and I don't mean to refute, and I can say, we haven't violated anything. We don't permit to violate. No, I'm not making that argument, okay, at all. But you understand what I'm saying. argument. Okay, no. But you understand what I'm saying. We want to get the permits, but to get the permit, we have to get the variance. That's how I read the ID. You may read it differently.
Is it in, which plat is this?
Well, this is a, this is a permit necessary for the encroachment. Once we get the encroachment, once we build the bridge, then we would, then and only then would we plant. This hasn't been planted yet.
So is the, is the bridge itself in 1, 2, 3, 4?
None of the above. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be planting these lots. It was just access to phase three.
Okay. So in what phase is the, is the structure itself in? 1, 2, 3, 4?
3. So it would be, it would be part of the plant for 3. That's correct. And we have not yet filed for that plant yet because we have to have access. We have to have the crossing. We have to have the crossing. We have to have the development permit. We have a development permit because we don't comply, so we can't get a clomar. And so, again, I don't want to be too cute, but I would say that's our thinking, is that we don't yet have the development permit necessary. And the reason that we're here for the variance is so that we can otherwise comply with the ordinance without getting the clomar.
I have a question for Mr. Brubaker. How long does it take to obtain a clomar?
Generally, 3 to 6 months, depending on whether there's comments or not on the review. What happens is, North Carolina has actually been granted authority by FEMA to review conditional letters of map provision. Letters of map provision? So that would go through our office, not through me. It would be reviewed by somebody else. One of our consultants would review the hydraulic model. If there were any inconsistencies or questions or comments, that would be returned. But 60 days is the minimum requirement to turn it around. So potentially, it could be just a little over 2 months. It could be, you know, depending on if resubmittals were required, it could be longer than that.
Okay. Like...
Do you have a few more questions? I heard it mentioned on a couple of occasions that the impact to the stream would be detrimental or potentially, I don't know, if we had to take the culvert out and reinstall. My question is, during the construction phase, was the creek not either bypassed, pumped or diverted to prevent that damage? And would not be the case if we had to take it back out, would the waters be diverted so we do not contaminate?
Water is diverted. That wouldn't be a...
Seal it. Okay. I heard potential impacts. I'm thinking, okay, we're not, I'm at the balance of construction. Okay. Thank you.
I have a follow-up, Mr. Brubaker, regarding your earlier answer. It was 3 to 6 months once the clomar was filed.
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
So then there's also, that doesn't include the time it takes to actually prepare and submit a complete clomar that's going to be complete. And that, so when you look at the time it's going to take, it's the preparation of the clomar, which is a substantial document, I understand. And then is the review of that. So that's what I clarify then.
Well, and I heard you say 2 years before, 24 months. Then I'm hearing him say, so where does, where does the...
There's some clomars alive. And we do get quite a few questions. And then between the response times, we find more so it's taking around 9 months to get it, once we submit it back because we have to go through letters and few events and things like that that just end up taking a little bit more time because you have that response period. It just depends on how busy the reviewers are. It depends on, you know, how the review staff and the study contractors. And when we get our responses back, and they get their responses back to us, and then we need additional information. So there's a lot of factors in there. It's more so, we found it's around 9, around 9 months that we are getting a final determination. And then I think they have, once we get our letter, they have some notification period that they need after that to a couple of months before we get our letter, right?
Well, the, the final letter of map provision is a 6-month, there's a 6-month comment and appeal period. Once the letter of map provision is approved, there's a 6-month comment and appeal period until it is formally adopted and goes into effect.
And then between the clomar and lomar is the actual construction. So you have the clomar preparation, you have the clomar supplemental review, then you would have the development permit submitted and reviewed and approved, then the construction, then the lomar post-process. So, so again, I think, I think we're not, that's certainly inconsistent. I'm just saying that was, that was the time period I was talking about, where we are now to really get the lomar.
Correct.
So I didn't make a mistake in that.
No.
Yeah. Yeah, I have no dispute with what Ms. Ward said.
So I guess I have a question. And I don't know who to ask it to. Shelley, I guess, if, if this variance was denied tonight, would they have to pull up the culverts before they file for their clomar?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. We're all in agreement with that.
May I?
I mean, what I was going to ask is, you don't want to disturb the, the stream and you want to do what's best for the community and the people, and you've already spent all this money on doing that. What I was going to suggest is, if it's even possible, is without taking the culverts out, if you apply, do, do the process the right way the first time, no matter who you hired and whose fault it was. Do the, do the lomar, clomar, leave the box drains in there, add your things to help show that you're doing the best thing for the community and everybody else. Because me and him, we're in public service and we've been to that area. And it, 2 weeks, what is it, you know, 2 weeks after the last meeting we did have, it flooded pretty badly. So I don't know if there's any way that we can do that, but that, I think that's, you said, let's, let's do the, what makes sense. What makes sense is if you file the paperwork the correct way, if there's, you know, I don't know if there's any way to leave the box drains in there, but add your 372s on top of it and be dealt with this thing.
When we went to Mr. Brubaker on October 2nd, I think that's what we were hoping we'd be able to do. And we asked him if that was possible.
And that is, that's not possible. There's a couple of, the 2 reasons. One, it would violate the code of federal regulation and put Caldwell County's participation in the NFIP at risk. The other thing is that the engineer has to certify on the conditional letter of map provision that it's a proposed project, that the project's not already installed. That's correct.
Mr. Bram, to your question, I want to differ with what Shelley and Mr. Steyer said, just in this respect. Your non-decision from a number of months ago, when the board voted 3 to 3 on the appeal from the denial of the permit based on the no-rise certification, which resulted in the planning director's denial of standing, that is on appeal to Superior Court right now. We've sort of put that on hold. So if you deny the variance tonight, that doesn't necessarily mean that they've got to take the culvert out. They could possibly win their appeal in Superior Court. If they win their appeal in Superior Court, they're going to get a permit based on the no-rise certifications that were submitted over a year ago that Mr. Brubaker didn't think were done right. But if the Superior Court rules in their favor, then they'll get that permit.
There is that option, but just a direct answer to your question about can you do a lomar without seeking the clomar stack?
Gotcha.
We think that a variance here or some solution would be preferable to, for lots of reasons, to a litigation result. But that's maybe the point that we're back into.
Mr. Chairman, before we wrap this up, I do want to make a brief closing statement.
Yeah, I've got one other question before we go into closing. So what I'm having a hard time with is if we were to grant this, then we quite possibly could put upstream property owners in a situation where they would have to obtain flood insurance for their property.
Are you asking me?
Yes.
Well, I know they would have to do a hydraulic analysis in the special flood hazard area if they were to build something in that special flood hazard area, whereas they may not have to do that before if variance weren't granted. Now, with flood insurance, I'm not sure if it would impact flood insurance. I don't think it necessarily would, but you can ask Dan.
Sure. The flood insurance requirement would only be required for structures that are in the special flood hazard area that carry a federally backed mortgage. So if you have a, if you have a federally backed mortgage, which most of them are, and you're in the special flood hazard area, you would be required to purchase flood insurance. If you're outside of the special flood hazard area, there is no mandatory purchase requirement for flood insurance.
So the answer to my question is yes, if it's possible.
May I respond? Theoretically possible. But given, given the slopes, given where this floodplain is, why would, I mean, theoretically, but as a practical matter, it only comes into play if you were to build a structure in that floodplain area, which no one's, that flood hazard area, which no one's going to do that has property along there. So yeah, if someone wants to build a house in the floodplain, there are going to be repercussions for that. But as a practical matter, why would anyone do that, given the size of lots, the topography, and, and the fairly, fairly narrow floodplain area through that area? So you've got, you've got a theoretical possibility, I can't deny that. As a practical matter, this, I feel comfortable saying this should not affect any of the upstream property owners. There's other options, rather than building a house in that floodplain, given the configuration of those properties, and you can, and exhibit, and the exhibits and the notebook shows the size of those lots and the configuration of those properties. It shouldn't be an issue.
But it could restrict the property to uses that...
Only in the floodplain.
Uh huh.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I have one for Mr. Brubaker. Why, what has changed from originally when you denied this to now? I mean, what makes you feel comfortable that what they're presenting now is acceptable?
It meets the minimum NFIP requirements. The ordinance requirement is for a hydraulic analysis for any work in either the floodway or the non-encroachment area. This stream does not have a floodway. It has a non-encroachment area. So the ordinance requirement would be for a hydraulic analysis for the culvert crossing. The minimum NFIP requirements nationwide, FEMA requirement, is that if you don't have a floodway, then you're limited to a 1-foot increase in flood levels without going through the conditional letter of map provision process. So FEMA has said that as far as they're concerned, as long as the rise is maintained within less than 1 foot, there's not a violation of the minimum NFIP requirements. Caldwell County, just like almost every other, well, every other municipality in North Carolina that has a non-encroachment area, has adopted the same standards. The idea would be that in that non-encroachment area, the same requirements apply as do a floodway, but it doesn't require a hydraulic analysis once you're outside of that non-encroachment area. With this, anything else within that non-encroachment area, like Shelley said, if this requirement goes into effect for the area that's affected, then anything else would require hydraulic analysis to make sure you don't increase that, get over that 1-foot threshold.
But that distinction is why what we're proposing now, these conditions, is more stringent and more protective of the stream than if we went through the clomar lomar process.
Any other questions?
Yes, thank you. I want to discuss the 3 basic reasons why the planning department believes that the application does not meet the ordinance requirements for the variance. Point number 1, allowing the variance will result in a rise in the base flood elevation. Number 2, and I'm sure Mr. Steyer's just going to want to respond to this, and he's already mentioned it, but this is a self-created hardship, and I'm going to contend that that disqualifies it from a variance. And then the, the third point is potential damage to innocent third parties and possible unknown consequences if the variance is granted to bail out a developer that violated the law and created this situation. I want to start by handing out, and this is just a copy of the variance revisions of our ordinance. It is certainly true, as Mr. Steyer has stated, that the board has certain amount of discretion in deciding variance applications, but there are certain conditions that must be met for the board to grant a variance. It is the planning department's contention that these conditions are not met.
Mr. Brubaker?
Oh, yes.
You want to give an...
I think I probably already have it, but just to make sure I understand what this is saying. Okay, thank you.
On the second page, I have highlighted Section 9B below, "Variances shall not be issued within any designated floodway or non-encroachment area if the variance would result in any increase in flood levels during the base flood discharge." The applicant's own evidence, the documentation that they've submitted, the testimony that they have committed tonight through their expert, shows that there will be a rise in the base flood elevation during the project this way. That's a disqualifier under the ordinance. Mr. DeBernardi touched on 9D. I really haven't focused on that one, but he raises the issue. On the next page, subsection E2, "Variances shall only be issued upon a determination that failure to grant the variance would result in exceptional hardship." I want to read to you, well, I'm not just going to read it, I'm going to hand it out. I'm going to hand out just a brief passage from David Owens, one of the planning law gurus down at the School of Government, of his handbook on land use planning law in North Carolina.
And then two more, one extra, please?
Excuse me?
One extra, please.
And I'm also going to hand out a copy of a portion of GS 168-388. And this is the statute that applies to boards of development throughout North Carolina. It also talks about the standards for variances. So in talking, looking first at what I handed you from Mr. Owens' treatise on planning law in North Carolina, in zoning law, the sta... law in North Carolina, in zoning law, the, one of the standards for a variance is unnecessary hardship, now, in the flood prevention ordinance, it's described as exceptional hardship, I assume that they mean basically the same thing, and here he talks about some of the tests that various courts around the country have considered and adopted when defining what it means or what it doesn't mean to constitute an unnecessary hardship. If you look at the following page, one of the bullets in the one I've highlighted, the hardship must not be of the applicant's, of the naked, and then if you'll look at the statute that I handed out, the section of 168-388, subsection D for variances, it's statutory law in North Carolina, when you are applying for a variance from a zoning ordinance, you have to show unnecessary hardship, and that's got to meet some conditions, and condition number three is, the hardship did not result from actions taken by the applicant or the property owner. Now, Mr. Steyer is absolutely correct that Mr. Owens is talking about variances from the zoning ordinance, and the statute is dealing with variances from the zoning ordinance, and what we're dealing with tonight is a variance from our flood prevention ordinance, and Mr. Steyer is also completely correct in saying that the variance provisions of our ordinance don't talk about, it can't be based on a hardship that's been created by the applicant or the property owner, but my question to you is, why wouldn't the same principle apply? It makes sense, our flood prevention ordinance requires exceptional hardship, and the North Carolina General Assembly has decided that certainly in the context of a zoning variance, an unnecessary hardship can't be something that the property owner or the applicant has created for themselves. The same principle should apply when construing what our flood prevention board says, that it's got to be an exceptional hardship, and you think about it, it just makes sense, property owner, developer shouldn't be able to do something that creates an unnecessary hardship for them, and then come in and say, we want you to relinquish us from what the law requires because we have messed up. Just makes common sense. Finally, going back to the variance provisions of the ordinance, the second page that I handed out, E3, "Variances shall only be issued upon a determination that the granting of a variance will not result in increased flood heights," there it is again, "additional threats to public safety or extraordinary public expense create..."